Legacy defining, he does so.
And that's what the president wanted me to do and what I was supposed to do.
You regret it?
I regret it now because the information was wrong, of course I do, but I will always be seen as the one who made the case before the international community.
And, you know, that presents...
Next item on the agenda is Item M. It's a public hearing, it's second reading of ordinances. Item M. 1 is the petition of the Economic Development Authority of Roanoke County to rezone approximately thirty point five acres from AR District to an I-2 District located at 5832 West River Road. This is in the Catawba Magistiral District. Our Director of Planning, Philip Thompson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As the Chairman indicated, a little over, the EDA of Roanoke County is trying to rezone a little over thirty acres from agricultural to industrial. For location purposes, you can see where the site is located in relation to the regional jail. It's off of, not far from the Exit 132, Diski Caverns, exit of Interstate 81, and CRT is at the north end of this map, so I'm close proximity to that as well. The property is located at 5832 West River Road. It's, again, a little over thirty acres. The property is split by rail line, so to the east of that rail line is approximately, what they're calling Track A in the proposal, or the development proposal, is twenty-one and a half acres. Track B, to the west, is a little, nine acres. It's for future industrial use, and currently has a house, and so it's a rural residential home site. Let's kind of focus then a little bit more on the actual home and the accessory buildings that are on the property. There is a railroad crossing, you'll see a picture of here in a little bit, that's used by the property owner to go over the tracks. Floodplain map, so the western portion of the property, the Roanoke River is on that side of, it's one of the boundaries, and so there is floodplain, floodway, floodplain, both the hundred-year and five-hundred-year floodplain on that side of the property. Couple photographs, this is from West River Road looking back at the house, so you can see kind of a pretty flat grass, grassy area, long driveway to the house, and it's kind of looking back towards West River Road from that location. And here's that railroad crossing that they utilize to get from one side of the property to the other. And this is that other side of the property, you can see it's fairly flat, it's wooded along the rail line and along the river, again, but this is where the floodplain is located as well. So there are no immediate development plans associated with this rezoning. As I mentioned, there is a proposal that the EDA put together, had Balzer and Associates evaluate the development potential of this property. So there's, on the Track A, which is the twenty-one and a half acres, there's roughly a development pad of fourteen acres. They show it with a potential rail spur coming off the rail line, it could accommodate a two-hundred-and-seventy thousand square foot building. If it's not served by rail, you can get even a larger building, up to three-hundred-thousand square feet. On the nine acres, that property does not have direct road access off of West River Road, there's one property in between. They do show a development pad of four acres, and a fifty-thousand square foot building has potential development on that site. Those concepts are shown here in a moment. So here's, on the Track A, West River Road to the left, the rail, the one, there's two rail lines, one also is to the, along the eastern property line. And so they show a hundred-and-fifty thousand square foot building with, it could be expanded to a hundred-and-twenty, an additional hundred-and-twenty thousand square foot, with a rail spur coming off, so that's the two-seventy proposal. The larger building, the three-hundred-thousand, shows an initial building of a hundred-and-eighty thousand with a future expansion of a hundred-and-twenty, so that's three-hundred-thousand square foot building that could be built on Track A. Track B, the alternative, again, this show, this is showing access off River Road if that was able to be done in the future, but the pad site along with the fifty-thousand square feet foot building being close to the rail line, and try to stay out of the floodplain as well. Again, these are not proffered, these are just kind of development concepts of what possibly could be done on these properties. Existing zoning is AR. As you look to the north, you have some AR, but you do have industrial to the north as well as to the south. To the east and west, you have AR as well. The future land use is principal industrial, so this whole area along the rail line is proposed to be developed as industrial. It's a future land use where a variety of industry types are encouraged to locate, their existing and planned regional employment centers and distribute throughout the county, convenient to major residential areas and suitable highway access. Appropriate land uses include small industries, custom manufacturing, mining, extraction, freestanding industrial uses, and industrial parks. So this request is consistent with that future land use designation. In our comp plan, we have a couple vision statements that are applied to this as well. You know, Roanoke County has played a major role in developing the Roanoke Valley, the center of industrial and commercial technology, by adequately funding the Industrial Development Authority, it's, see how, how long this has been going, since that's the EDA, enabling them to acquire property, providing the infrastructure to encourage economic growth, and also looking to encourage technological improvements, innovations in manufacturing, power transmission, communications, commerce, and transportation. There are a couple vision statements, in the economic development portion of our conference plan, there are several goals that are related to this as well, so they're consistent with that as well. And then also the Glenver Plan. Glenver Plan was adopted as part of the comp plan back in 2012, that we had a Citizens Committee that was very active in that. And so there are additional things that are consistent with that, the overall vision, tries to be a visually appealing, healthy, and sustainable community that encourages a mix of land uses in a manner that's consistent with the community's rural character, and that ensure that public services facilities will adequately serve the needs of residents and businesses that are adaptable for future growth, provide a mix of environmentally sensitive commercial and industrial uses, appropriate locations in the Glenver community, and then maintain a healthy, safe, and sustainable community that ensures opportunities for a multi-generational community to live, work, recreate, and raise a family. So, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the principal industrial future land use, the vision statements and goals in the economic development plan section of the County's Conference Plan, as well as the vision statement and goals of the Glenver Community Plan. Their Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on October 4th. There were four citizens who spoke during the public hearing, one in support, three in opposition. Their concerns dealt with increased traffic, not knowing what the industrial use would be, the need to protect the scenic beauty of the area, view set impacts to property owners along 460, so there are several people on 460 closer to Dalhollow intersection that sit a little higher in elevation of this site, and that was one of their concerns. The adjacent I-2 zoning, more jobs for the Roanoke Valley, weight limits, capacity of the bridge over the Roanoke River, traffic safety at Route 460, Dalhollow intersection was raised as well. Again, land available at CRT developed versus this location, stormwater runoff and erosion center control. Planning Commission discussed the rail lines, the existing entrance on the property, the amount of land zone industrial in the county, floodplain, ENS and stormwater regulations, the Route 460 Dalhollow intersection, the bridge over the Roanoke River, sites available at CRT, lighting and noise impacts associated with the industrial development, surrounding zoning, the future land use designation, and the consistency with the comp plan and Glenver Community Plan. So, the Planning Commission does recommend approval of the rezoning request from AR to I-2, and staff does as well. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I think, Jill, are you gonna say anything or just answer questions?
Mr. Rafferty?
Martha, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I have just a couple of quick questions. This is in the Catawba District, and I, and Jill, you can help us with this commentary, but they're proposing industrial zoning, and just as a reminder, what is our percentage of industrial zoning in Roanoke County?
It's less than one percent.
And, so, the house, the existing house, is it, like, it's not historical, or do we have any issues with that?
Not that I'm aware of. The Ashworths are present, if you'd like to address that.
Okay. I just saw where it was, it had significant age, and I was looking for that number of years old, and I couldn't find it right off, but I know that it's significantly older. And so I just wanted to ask a quick question about that. Unique quality for this property versus CRT, what would you say is unique about this versus CRT?
This property is very unique because it has a flat contiguous acreage of thirty acres, and the CRT does not have that. The development cost would be far greater at the CRT than they are on the Ashworth property.
And rail.
Plus, the CRT does not have rail access, so rail users would naturally gravitate to the Ashworth property.
So there are some clear differences between those two properties, and that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yeah, Jill, you drove me over those properties a couple of years ago, and that's great for industrial, I mean, we, we need to add it to our inventory, it's great. How, how will you see getting from the smaller track to get road access? What's your thoughts on that?
That would be up to the new buyer, end user, to figure out through a site planning process.
So we're selling it as one piece?
That, well, that would be ultimately up to the Ashworths, how the contract would work on a sale. This rezoning is the first step in teeing up a sale to an end user.
Okay, got it, okay. And then, the, of the smaller property, it looks like it's, it's got a lot of floodplain issues, but you could probably add some dirt and be above it and go along with it, so...
Some companies have done that, but it's not likely or probable that that part of the property would be used very readily.
I can't remember, you said sewer and water near there?
They would have to extend that from 460, just like the regional jail did.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Newhart?
Yeah, Ms. Loop, a question concerning industrial development. Has, there been any interest shown by any other businesses in that corridor, and/or have you heard any contacts from allies at the railroad about property or companies' interests along there?
In recent years?
Like in the last, what, last year?
We've had a number of prospects interested in this area of the county for certain types of uses in the last year, okay? They have not been rail users, however, they periodically do present themselves as great interest in identifying those properties, but the railroad has this in their inventory. We have worked with them, we have design plans on the property showing how rail could get into this site, so it's on their radar screen, we just haven't had a high demand for rail in recent years.
And about how far is this site from other rail-served customers today that you know are served in local industries by Norfolk Southern? Is this five miles from Salem in those industries?
Yes, easily.
Okay. Rail service wouldn't be a problem out of the Bradford or Christiansburg yard, then?
I wouldn't think so. We haven't had any issues presented by the railroad that that could be a problem. It's been looked at over the years for a number of different uses, including rail users in particular, but it has never been zoned properly to accommodate those uses.
I got you.
You know, we're now trying to advance the marketability of this site for an industrial user, and I think the Ashworths are cooperative and ready to take the next step and find a new opportunity.
Thank you, no more questions.
Mr. Thompson, I, I think it's, I forget, it's maybe slide fifteen or sixteen, off the top of your head, what's the land use designation for the regional jail?
I believe it's principal industrial as well.
I, I thought, I can't, I thought I was asking, because I can't recall back when the county created the regional jail. I can't remember if we designated that as, as an I.
It's right up here.
I thought it was.
It's to the top of the thing, so...
Yes, okay, thank you. So that's consistent with what is in that immediate area?
Yep.
Thank you.
If there's no more questions, I will open a public hearing. I have one, one person to sign up to speak, and that is Mr. Neil Horn. Just a reminder that you have three minutes to speak, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, good day, good evening. My name's Neil Horn, I live at 529 Eagle Boulevard, which is in, just beside Glenver in Roanoke County. I'm here on behalf of Harold and Shirley Horn, who are the landowners of 5647 West River Road. That property consists of three parcels, which are to the north and northeast of, of the Ashworth property. And I'm tasked to tell you that we do not object to this property being rezoned. The majority of our property is already I-2, and we've been neighbors with the Ashworths for about thirty-some years, and we believe that if rezoning would help them realize the value of their property, then it's proper. In addition, if there's self-interest there as well, it will hopefully and most likely provide value to our property as well. If I am not mistaken, if this, if the Ashworth property is rezoned to I-2, then all of the properties combined, including the Horn property, would be the largest undivided sections of I-2 property in the valley. I think that includes the county, the city, and the city of Salem. So that was why I came down here to address you tonight, but I'll, however, there, I attended the zoning meeting back on October the 4th, and there was a question that I did not hear a, I think, a, a proper answer to, and it is, and I will ask you this question. Why is a governmental entity, in this case, the Economic Develop Authority, acting on the behalf of a private citizen to help increase the value or marketability of their private property when there appears to be no buyer from the outside? The county is not interested in buying the property, and there appears to be no, I think, as I said, no future buyer for this or other plans for the use of this, no specific plans for the use of this property. At that hearing, it appears that there is some precedent in the past for the EDA to assist private property owners, but that is very rare, and I would put it to you that there needs to be an answer as to why the governmental entity is acting in this, in this capacity, and it should be a pretty extraordinary answer, since this is such a rare thing. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if, before Mr. Horn leaves, if we could pull that slide back up, Mr. Thompson, and if you could just point to us on the map, I, I'm wondering if the one that had the principal industrial future land use, if you could show us approximately the property, if you come to this screen on the front of this...
Well, what I could show is the zoning might be better.
Okay.
It's the, to the north, excuse me, to the north of, you see that purple?
Crescent.
Crescent. They own that, and they own some, I believe, also the, the R1, too.
We own all of the yellow and all of the purple crescent.
Gotcha.
To the north of...
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted that clarified.
Okay, so I have no, no one else signed up to speak, I will now close the public hearing, and then I'll turn it back over to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, if, Ms. Loop, I don't know if you would be, if it would be appropriate for you to come and just give a quick response to the question about the EDA involvement, and maybe the process that's been pursued in this rezoning, and then I'll continue on with my...
Sure, it's within, within the state code of Virginia, that EDAs are empowered by law to rezone, own, acquire, develop property. The Roanoke County Economic Development Authority hasn't done a lot of that in the past, but we have in the past supported that development in this way. With regard to why we're doing that and the process that we undertook to consider this, I've been with the county twenty-one years. We have been working with the Ashworths for at least that long, maybe fifteen years, to market their property for industrial development, as we do with all property owners. We try to identify where there's available land, large tracts of land, how can we get them to a higher level of readiness and eliminate barriers to development. Over the years, we've had a few we thought might come close to landing on the Ashworth property, but they, the contracts go through because of complexities and perceived barriers, and real barriers to development, including zoning, so. And about two years ago, we worked with the Roanoke Regional Partnership, we hired Balzer and Associates to do a preliminary study to see what kind of maximum yield we can get on these properties, and that's some of the drawings that you saw tonight that Mr. Thompson presented. And that's because of demand. We've had a lot of interest being shown in this region, in this market, and we have not been able to fulfill the demand. We've not been able to respond to the prospect's interest in the county, so. We felt like we needed to take some action, we needed to move forward, we needed to use the powers of the authority to work together with the Ashworths, as we would any property owner, if the time was right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Rafferty? Is there any other comments?
Well, I was gonna add a, a question off that, so, his question was, why are we helping that property versus maybe his property?
His property is already zoned industrial, and we have marketed the Horn property for a long time, too, and thank you for your father, we've worked together a long time, appreciate that very much. So, we are marketing those properties, it's just that the Ashworth property wasn't zoned properly, and it's a larger contiguous level tract, and that's what was in demand at the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Newhart?
You know, in 2017, when I was running first time for supervisor, Mr. Peters over here will support that, I ran on it, proactive economic development. I, I think this is a good example of proactive economic development that I've been waiting to hear, and so I just want to say that good work, and this is what development is all about, and I'm glad to see a business acumen used here in this case. As you said, it's not something that happens very often, but this is a good example, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and, and I would add to that, that we would consider these types of rezonings in areas where it's appropriate, and the property owners are cooperative and ready and willing, and we can have a partnership. The EDA would be very supportive of that, so we would consider this again.
So, I just want to say I'm in support of rezoning this property, and I find that the proposed rezoning request is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan and good zoning practice, and will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move to approve the rezoning request as it has been requested.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if the, if the Board did close the public hearing, I may have missed that, you did, very good, thank you, sir.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Noworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, thank you. Move on to Item N, citizens' comments and communications. I have no one signed up to speak, so I'll move on to Item O, reports and inquiries of board members. Today, I will begin with Ms. Hooker.
I just have a couple of quick comments, Mr. Chairman. Last Tuesday, several of us attended the Freyland Biomedical Facility ribbon cutting, and it was an amazing facility, enjoyed the tour, we appreciate all that Carillion and Virginia Tech does for our region. And then, the second item is that there's, the next Glenver Community Meeting for the 200 Plan Community Meeting is November 8th at Fort Lewis Elementary School from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, and I look forward to seeing people there. Thank you.
Mr. Newhart?
Well, I've reduced my twenty minutes of comments down to probably two minutes.
It's a Reader's Digest version.
Cliff Notes version.
Start the timer.
A lot of us have attended a lot of events, but I'll let the gentleman from Case Train talk about the new airport director, so I'll skip that. We did attend on that recently in open house at the Burton Career Technical Center to show the public and the schools how board supervisors supports our schools and their efforts to grow the Burton Career Technical School. I think there was over four hundred students that night that attended that are rising juniors, I think they were sophomores, I believe, to attend the, the program next year, and their parents were there, too, and there certainly are a lot of programs that are offered to teach our young children in school today many trades, so. More on that is, the school committee continues their study of... So, more on that is, the school committee continues their study of the Burton Career Technical School. On October 12th, attended the grand opening along with supervisors Hooker and Mahoney of the Frayland Biomedical Research Institute ribbon cutting. The facility founded in 2010 has 37 faculty-led research teams, and with each research team brings in support staff. And so, the economic impact is felt throughout the region of new people moving to the area to live, work, and play. They have over 400 employees there, and a projected annual economic impact, which I'm big on numbers about economic impact, by 2026, a $450 million in this area. So even though they're located in our neighbors next door, the city, people live and spend money all around this area, they come in to visit and to work there. And so the regional impact is absolutely appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Radford.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have just a few items. Just wanted to report that on October 11th, at the Brambleton Center, we had the Roanoke County 200 Plan come to the Brambleton Center, and the staff did a great job. We celebrated somebody's birthday with cupcakes there, I don't know who it is, but I won't mention any names, but had a good, thought it was a good turnout. Got to talk to several of the Windsor Hills residents. Also, this past Monday, October 18th, we opened the Brambleton Center for early voting. So, if any of my constituents from, from, well, from Windsor Hills, but also Cave Spring and Catawba, if they feel like the need to come to a closer place, we have that open for you, too. And I'll let our chairman tell us about the next Windsor Hills Community Roanoke County 200 Plan meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mahoney?
I want to thank Supervisor North for yielding the remainder of those 20 minutes to me. I think all of us, all the board members have been pretty busy the last two weeks. We've had a lot of very exciting activities over the past two weeks. Number one, as both Supervisor Hooker and North talked about, we, I had the distinct pleasure of that Frayland Biomedical Research Institute grand opening, but what really impressed me, and I brought a copy of the information they had given us, a young student by the name of Rashana Devon Samaya was one of the six speakers. She is a fifth-year student, she is going to be getting her PhD in neuroscience, I think, this, the school year, maybe this end of May or June of 22. But she happened to be one of the people on the tour that several of us were on, as they took us through the facility and showed us the different laboratories and facilities. Just an amazing young woman, and it's just an example of how exciting this, this scientific breakthrough is, I think, for our region. With Supervisor North, had an opportunity to meet Mike Stewart, the new executive director of the airport, very impressive. I don't want to steal the thunder of Rebecca Owens, she'll probably give us an update, maybe in the next couple of meetings, when the final financial audit from the Western Virginia Rail, Western Virginia Jail Authority is presented to us. I can report to the board that Jail Authority looks in pretty good shape, so, so far, things are looking good. Attended two of the comprehensive plan meetings, one at Clearbrook, which unfortunately was sparsely attended, and then yesterday at South County Library for the Cave Spring one. And I think Mr. Thompson indicated that we had, what, 53 citizens attend, which was great, which I found interesting, and I know Philip does an excellent job giving us summaries of what citizens talk about at these meetings. But at least with respect to the citizens who spoke to me, I heard maybe three messages. One is, a lot of citizens want county recycling, which we talked about in the past. The second, I was surprised, citizens spoke to me, they have been following our meetings, and when we talked about, I think, at one of our last meetings, the year-end carryover that we had, they disagreed with what I wanted to do, which was provide some kind of rebate or refund to our citizens. These citizens indicated no, they wanted to use those funds to meet some of the unfulfilled or unmet needs that the county has identified. And then finally, a lot of citizens were very, very, very happy with a lot of the transportation projects. I think the only area of concern that they expressed was concerns with respect to Route 220, as you had south towards Franklin County from the 419 intersection. They had some questions and some trepidation about, would that really work? And finally, to echo what Supervisor Radford indicated, my wife and I yesterday went to Brambleton Center, we voted, and it appears that the folks there have everything in order. It moved very smoothly, everything worked great. So, please, citizens, voting is critical to the foundation of our, of our republic, and please vote, whatever side you want to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, as you know, our work sessions are not televised, but I do want to kind of talk about the last work session we had with our county police chief. And while we still, I think he reported, we have nine vacancies currently in our police department. As a board, I think we want to continue to echo our support for our police, fire and rescue, all our public safety, because, and as I've said a number of times here and I said upstairs, if you don't have a safe community, you have nothing. And so I know that we are, we're thankful for our police department and what they do for us, and I do appreciate Chief Hall giving us those updates on where the police department stands. Roanoke County 200, there will be two more meetings in the next couple of weeks. They are each from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The next two will be on October the 28th at Back Creek Elementary, and then on November the 4th at the Bent Mountain Center. I will echo what Mr. Mahoney just said. Our voting is open at the Brambleton Center and in Vinton, so we encourage all of our citizens to get out and vote. And then lastly, I will not be at our next meeting, I will be turning, turn it over to Mr. Radford. I will have to go back for test and treatment at Johns Hopkins. Appreciate your thoughts and prayers as I start down this road again, but Mr. Radford will be taking care of us at the next meeting, and I will be watching.
Okay.
So, with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Noworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, and just a reminder that our next board meeting will not be on Tuesday, it will be on Wednesday, November 3rd.